I'll go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum present of six members. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us, and we are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Members of the board will begin this meeting like we do all of our regular meetings with our pledges of allegiance to the American flag and the Texas flag in a moment of silence. And we have some students with us this evening to lead us in the pledges, and they're members of our enrichment summer school. I'd like to invite principal of our enrichment summer school, Melanie Marshall, up here to introduce her students.
Several of these kids have come to summer enrichment multiple summers, so they're here to help us with our pledges. We have Rose Reyna, Matthew Reyna, Dustin Lee, and John Summers. So we're gonna kinda do this together, I think. Okay? Let's see. Okay, so we're gonna turn. Do we turn to the flag? Is that how we do that? Let's turn to the flag. Okay, so let me say, attention, salute. Ready? Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salute, pledge, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. If you'll lead us, or join us in the moment of silence?
Well done. Thank you, guys.
You guys taking pictures? Taking pictures when we go?
Back up close for the scary people in the suits.
We won't get jumped.
Feel free to come on up there.
We'll sneak in.
All right, we'll move it down.
One more.
One more.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And we have no recognitions.
It's been provided by the CSISD enrichment summer school students. If you have a chance, take a look at it. We really have some talented students, so if any of you are here, thank you for that. Next item is the consent agenda, which is items E2, G, H2, H3, H4, I2, I3, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. Does anyone want to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion?
I would just like to say, in honor of Greg McIntyre's last board meeting with us, I gave strong consideration, pulled J11 off the consent agenda in his honor, but we're gonna leave it on there for the sake of time. I move approval of the consent agenda as put forth.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Board reports and announcements. Does any board member have a report or an announcement? The only thing I would comment on is something that we were all at, and that was the, since our last meeting, the high school graduations, all three of them, I thought were awesome services, ceremonies to be a part of, and I hope you all enjoyed that as much as I did. I know you did. But seeing the students and their families all celebrating, it really drives home for me the good work that the people in the district do. So I just wanted to note that, and thank you, Dr. Ely, and all of your folks, and all of our teachers, and everybody who does all that good work to make that night possible, including the students, because they do a lot of it, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our three high schools do a great job of honoring our students. They're great ceremonies, and really, they're great celebrations.
Yep. Any other board reports? Okay, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I do have just a few things on upcoming events. It's June, not a lot is happening around the school district in June. It is good to know that we do have a number of kids, though, who are still with us, either of three. We saw our enrichment summer school kids who are here. We have ESY, Extended School Year, for some of our students with disabilities. We have dual-language programs, bilingual programs throughout the summer. Of course, we have sports camps going on at our two comprehensive high schools all over the place, and we have high school and middle school summer schools. So a lot of action is going on here, but not as much board activity. But I would like to let the board and the community know that we will be having an election in November for trustees, place one in two, and the first day to file for that election will be Ju-- yeah, the first day to file will be July the 23rd, which is a Monday, and the last day to file will be August 20th. Those board packets are now available in CSISD's central office. Please see Carrie Horn, executive assistant. She has that information for anybody who is interested in pursuing board service. Do wanna visit a little bit about the city and county partnership and what great partners both Brazos County and the City of College Station are for College Station ISD, and highlight one piece of action that happened in both groups. Two weeks ago, Brazos County approved an interlocal agreement, and then last week, the City of College Station approved an interlocal agreement for the upgrade of Rock Prairie Road West from Riverbend Elementary all the way through to Welburn Road. And while this seems like it's not a big deal, when you have one roadway that has two different jurisdictions, and it goes from one to the other, back to the one, it can be a little bit problematic. So I appreciate the leaders at the city and the leaders at the county getting together to work together, to put one roadway that will be the same configuration all the way out. It won't go in and out. It won't be two different services, two different surfaces, and it will be all maintained by one entity. So I appreciate CS, both City of College Station, as I said, and Brazos County for their working together. It just shows what we can do in this community when we put our heads together. So I do appreciate them, and just, you know, it is one of the things we talked about at our workshop session at 5:00, the tremendous amount of growth that we are feeling in this community. We see it in our schools. Brazos County sees it in the county. Of course, the City of College Station deals with it as well. So appreciate both of them for their work over the last two weeks to help students in College Station ISD. Last thing I'd like to say is spend a little bit of time in something that was just mentioned by Dr. Weston a minute ago. This is Greg McIntyre's last board meeting with us. Greg is retiring after 32 years in education and 29 years in College Station ISD. Wanted to just recognize him for his service for the school kids in College Station ISD and across the state. Greg and his wife, Kelly, have lived, obviously, a long time in the community, have graduated three daughters from College Station ISD, and the oldest of which, Shelby, has actually come back to work with us in child nutrition. Throughout his career, Greg has been a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal. He was the first principal of A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School back when we split our middle schools in half, which was back in the 2000 school year. He moved over to be the Director of Human Resources, and he served as Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and most recently, as the Chief Administrative Officer. In every role and in every situation, Greg has always acted in the best interest of students and families in College Station ISD. Personally, Greg has been a great colleague and confidant for me over the years, and he is someone that I've learned a tremendous amount from in all the years that I've known him, which has been 18 now. I'm happy to have called Greg a friend and continue to call him a friend. In a few minutes, I'm gonna make a recommendation for a new Chief Administrative Officer. But I will not be, there's no way you can replace Greg. Greg is gonna leave a tremendous hole in this district. While Molly will have that role, and she will lead that division, and she will do very well, she doesn't replace Greg, because he's been a tremendous asset to this community for three decades. So Greg, thank you for everything that you've done for College Station ISD, that you've done for our students, for our families in this community, and you will be missed. Thank you. So now you have five minutes for rebuttal, if you would like to take that, so.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And with that, Mr. Harris, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item F, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have any cards?
No.
Okay. That takes us to item H1, Receive Report Related to CSISD's Vision for Instruction and Learner Profile Development. Dr. Ely?
Mr. President, members of the board, I asked Dr. Trammell to come and share with you much of the work, not all of it, but much of the work that's happened over the last year in curriculum instruction in College Station ISD. We have gone about looking at the work that we're doing, not only our student performance data, but looking at-- David is turning on the displays.
Thank you.
So as I vamp.
Just a moment of fanning.
That was fun to watch. So we've done a lot of great work in curriculum instruction, and a lot of that's going on this week. From Monday through Friday of this week, we've got educators, teachers, and administrators from across the district over at College Station High School that are working on writing our curriculum for grades K through 12 in our four core areas. But leading up to that, a lot of work has been done that I'd like Penny to highlight, specifically, the work we've done developing our vision for curriculum instruction in College Station ISD, and first for us, CSISD learner profiles. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Penny Trammell, our chief academic officer, to present this information to us. Dr. Trammell?
Thank you. Well, we have been very busy this fall and spring. All departments throughout the district belong or have representatives on the success team, and this work has been done primarily through the success team and our District Education Improvement Council. And as part of just kind of an analysis coming into the district, and as part of the continuous improvement process, we, in looking at our data, realized we've got some gaps between different groups. We examined our curriculum documents, had conversations with principals and educators or teachers, and conducted walkthroughs throughout every building in the district, just to kind of look at what's going on in the classrooms at every level, and the different courses, and endorsement tracks, and that kind of thing, and came to the conclusion that while we had a lot of really good work going on, we weren't necessarily cohesive in what we were working toward. So in bringing that to Dr. Ely, we began to form a plan to create such a common direction for everyone so that all of our decision-making could be aligned, and all of our work could be aligned, and hopefully result in greater success for students and productivity in our district. So with that, we started with two documents that have really guided our work in College Station ISD for several years now, a new vision for public education in Texas and the implementation matrix that accompanies that. They're both on the TASSA website, and these are documents that were created by superintendents across the state doing national and international research, collaborating with TEA, and providing us with articles to give us areas of focus for the future, and to help us understand, hey, there's a lot out there in this world, and we, as the state of Texas, want to be sure that we are doing what we need to do to give our students every advantage to have what they need to go forth and be successful in whatever they would want to do in life. So with the success team, we worked with these two documents. The implementation matrix is particularly helpy, helpful. Hello? If you go on the TASSA website, it is basically a rubric that helps you see what the visioning document would look like in a district and at a campus level, and, most importantly, with student voice and student actions and skills when they leave a system. So these documents were critical in our work. To get started on our work, we started with the individual beliefs of all the people on the success team, and we also considered the board's core beliefs and commitments, because we felt like whatever we do, we have promised, or you all have promised as the board, certain things to the community, and we wanted to be sure that every single bit of work we did aligned to what you all felt were the commitments to our community. So those were documents that were looked at frequently and embedded throughout our entire process. We started with individual beliefs as a success team members, which included, of course, all the departments and all the campus administrators, central office folks, and had people write individual beliefs on each Post-it note. So if Carol had 10 beliefs that she believed emphatically needed to happen for kids in College Station ISD, she had 10 Post-it notes. We categorized those Post-it notes, whoops, let me see if I can get there, into categories. This is called affinity mapping, and we came up with 11 categories. One is a miscellaneous category that encompassed some of the things that you see in that area. So these were the primary focus areas that the beliefs of that entire committee fell within. What we did after that was take those core beliefs and create 11 different groups. So we divided that success team up into 11 groups. Each group took one. So Dr. Weston might have been on the creativity group. They took all those little Post-it notes, and they crafted one belief statement that encompassed all of the beliefs in that category. Then what happened from there is each group shared out, then we re-divided the success team and asked them to synthesize again these 11 belief statements, so they became statements, to craft a common vision. And then we combined groups to create a vision, so that every time we were vetting work through every single person on the success team, to be sure that we weren't leaving anything out, and especially anything that people felt strongly about in our district. Again, we considered the board's core beliefs and commitments and the priorities that you all have for our district. This was the vision statement that we came up with. We do, as Jeff indicated at the beginning of the meeting, we do believe that each day, each life, each hour, you know, incorporating the mission was very important to us in this piece of work, because that is something that we all know and can remember. But in crafting the top part of the vision statement, this helped us know, okay, what do we want for our outcome for learners? There's a plus to having a common vision, but you're not quite done yet when you get to that stage. There is more work to do. When we think about from a big system, which our district is growing, aligning all of our work and creating that shared practice all the way down to the classroom level, that's a big job. And so you need the right documents in place in order for that to happen effectively. So we created something called a learner profile. We worked on our goals that went to the DEIC for the DIP, and that CIP, our campuses will use for their CIPs. When we think about a learner profile, this is really kind of a guiding compass. So what you do is you imagine the future. So A New Vision for Education in Texas was a document that we looked at, but we also recognized as adults, and even as, you know, young learners, we build these mental models that drive our thinking. So we have certain experiences and reinforcements on behaviors that cause us to think a certain way, and it's very difficult sometime for us to look beyond that to a broader scope, to the future. Who knows, you know, five years, 10 years from now? We have kids entering in pre-K Head Start in our system, so we really wanted to be as forward-thinking as possible to work on this work. So what we did was, we found videos of kids currently in public school systems who have not graduated high school yet, and we shared those videos and had discussions with success team about, okay, if we want kids in College Station ISD to be doing these things while they're still in our school system, what are some things we need to be doing with them? What are some experiences we need to be providing for them? So we created a College Station ISD learner profile that will guide the work of campuses, all of our plans, so that we're working from pre-K up on these learners that will graduate, or these students that will graduate our system with the competencies we think they need in cognitive development, personal development, health, and interpersonal competencies. So moving along, as we worked on that work, we came up with five categories. Again, this was done through group work, regrouping, and vetting. We fleshed out each one of these, because we again went back to our core beliefs, back to the board's core beliefs and commitments and priorities, to make sure that we weren't leaving anything out. We wanted to be sure that we were very aligned to all the solid documents that we had going in the district at that time. We created the learner profile, and I want to show you that real quick. Atticcan created a graphic for us, and so I wanted to share this. You'll see the five areas we settled on. Communication and collaboration, we felt like that was one of the big categories. Businesses want people who can stand in front of a group and articulate information well. They want people who can play nice with others. They want them to be able to work on collaborative teams, either in a physical space or across the world in different countries. They also, you know, we know it's important for good personal health, both mental and physical. Another thing that's critical, that I think all of our parents would agree, was knowledge and understanding. So we want to go beyond knowledge to understanding, so kids can, later on, you'll see, be critical thinkers and problem solvers. So what are they gonna do with that knowledge? So it's not just about memorizing certain things, it's about what are you gonna do with that, and how are you gonna use that in life? So what if you learn your multiplication facts? How's that gonna help you? So, and then also, another area that was a primary area was to be a socially engaged citizen. We know that we need people, you know, to keep our community going, provide service, have a heart of service, have empathy for others, take care of us when we get older and maybe need that, but really give back to the community, whether it's College Station ISD or wherever they choose to go. This is what the learner profile looks like. So you'll see those same five big categories, and then you'll see individual statements under, or phrases underneath each one to kind of help you visualize. So what do we mean when we say pursues personal wellness? What is that going to be? And then using this document, that will help guide, well, what are the things we need to be doing in curriculum and instruction to help ensure that our kids at least have these skills? Now, we all know we have independent will, and we can choose to get up at 4:45 and go to the gym, or we can choose to sleep in, but I'm not casting judgments on anyone, but we at least want to prepare them with those skills. So this is the primary document, kind of our north compass, where as we're developing the curriculum, we want to be sure that we are providing the right experiences for kids to leave our district with all of these things intact. Going back to this. All that to say, everything is aligned. So the DEIC saw the vision, the vision that we'd established to guide the curriculum before they approved the goals and crafted the goals that went with our district improvement plan. So the goals that are in the district improvement plan were guided by, again, the board's core beliefs and practices and priorities. They were guided by the learner profile and the belief work of the success team. Those goals were incorporated into the DIP. Then we used local data in our comprehensive needs assessment that the district does, and then campuses do for their campus improvement plan. We used that to form our district improvement plan, and then campuses are currently using that to incorporate in their campus improvement plans along with their customized campus data. So everything is aligned and works together. So when we make decisions, they should be vetted through all of this work and all of these things. They should be, decisions should be made to actualize the vision, the curriculum vision we have for our kids, to actualize the learner profile, so that when Mike's, you know, next kid graduates high school, they have all of these in place. That would be our goal. So campuses are doing that now, and then we are currently at College Station High School doing, working in teams on curriculum writing. We have about 120, 125 educators, practitioners. We have some administrators, some campus principals, that have chose to join the curriculum writing teams that are lending their expertise to that, and we are making great progress every day. Today was our second day of curriculum writing, and I have to say, we are on target. I would also like to publicly thank Erin Hogan, Jennifer Smith, Amanda Gibson, and Kelly Kovacs for leading those four core areas. And then we have some of the best educators in this district, practitioners in the classroom teaching kids every day that are also working on this curriculum. So we're excited about it. They are excited about how much progress they're making. So it's pretty cool work, and with the outcome being, we hope to address cultural capital issues, those gaps I talked about at the very beginning that some of our learners have, some of our groups of learners. The idea is equal access to excellence in every classroom, in every school, in every course and grade across this district. So if, you know, Mr. Schaefer gets a teacher who loves life science, and Carol gets a teacher who loves earth science, one teacher's not spending two months on life science and two weeks on earth science, and another teacher is spending the reverse of that, because then when we look at the learning opportunities for those kids, that's not equal access to both strands of science. So that is our purpose of looking and revamping our curriculum, to provide equal access for kids across-- kids across the district, to provide rich resources and equitable resources so that when we say this is in the district curriculum, every kid in this district, no matter their campus and the campus resources, has equal access for their learning to those resources. So we just wanted to share a little bit of the work we've been working on this year. And we're excited, we are on target to have the curriculum that we promised to have available in August available. And we have incorporated our August professional learning into that. And we are so excited to have principals joining us in the work so that they can be a big support in the implementation because we can have this fabulous curriculum. But if it's not shared and everyone is not on the same page, then implementation and calibration could be an issue and we want to be proactive in that. So, so we appreciate you letting us share a little bit about our work this evening. And are there any questions or comments?
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you bet.
It's a great presentation. Any questions, comments?
I, I just, oh, so go ahead.
Well, no, I was waiting for someone else. I just know, having sat on the core beliefs and commitments, I think Mr. Harris was with us when we sat through that, I know how much work it takes. And I appreciate everyone and their work because this is a lot that's been done already. And I know that they're doing it over this, I mean, it's, they're still in, in session, but it's a lot of work in the summer too. And I appreciate everyone sticking that out because that's a lot of work.
Okay, the teachers, I mean, they are just so excited. By the end of the day, like Kelly's group, Jennifer's group, Amanda's group, Erin's group, they're just, they are excited about the work and they're like shocked that they're getting so much work done. But it's pretty awesome work.
Well, it's good they're excited too. They're working and they're excited.
I do have a couple of comments and then I guess a question. The first is that learner profile looks great. I mean, this is.
Team effort.
You know, I have a soon-to-be senior and I look at that and that's a good list. I hope he gets out with all that.
We start building that in kindergarten, I, you know, but of course, as close as we can get to that, you bet.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And then the other thing is a question. You, you mentioned although, to make sure that the, the teachers and the equal opportunity. And is that horizontal alignment? Is that the phrase?
So we are looking at horizontal alignment, which is across the course. So all the teachers that teach Algebra I, whether they're eighth grade teachers, ninth grade teachers, whatever. And then we are also looking vertically though. So, and we have found some gaps that we're filling in. So at third grade, there's an opportunity for us to teach something that could support grades in middle school with a better foundation in math so that math's got a solid foundation as we get on up and move into Algebra II and calculus and that kind of thing. So we're finding gaps, which is exciting because we're able to be proactive and fill those in. We're also finding ways to support. So when kids enter our pre-K Head Start program, there are opportunities. We have representatives from those levels as well in, on the curriculum writing team. They are excited because there are ways that they can do, they feel like a, a better job with vocabulary and some experiences that might give kids a better start in kindergarten so they're not coming in with that deficit that we know research shows kids who qualify for those programs have.
Do you anticipate any pushback sometimes when we, you know, people have been doing something a certain way?
Sure. So today I visited all the groups, but I primarily spent time with the fifth through eighth grade language arts group because their teaks are changing. And we are laying out teaks according to categories. So we have genres laid out. And, you know, I don't know if y'all have heard or your kid, own kids have made poetry books, which poetry's great to teach, that genre and figurative language and grammar and all of those great things. However, there was one lonely teak for poetry. So it doesn't really justify at that particular grade level, and I believe it was seventh grade we were looking at, to spend a month on one teak when we've got informational text that might have 11 teaks. And we know nowadays we're reading manuals and learning how to connect things and things that work. Many of you probably read very complex informational text to, in order to do a, a great job with your career. We, that's a higher level, that's a different kind of reading. And so we really need to be spending more time on informational text as opposed to, we all love the poetry units and we all love those sweet poems and those profound, you know, vocabulary words that our kids use when they're writing the beautiful emotional poems. However, it is not necessarily where we need to be spending that much time.
At that particular grade level.
At that particular grade level. Thank you, Dr. Ely for clarifying. So yes, so not to say we're doing away with poetry. It is a genre we love, so please do not take that forward. That is not the case. Not the case.
We, we love poetry.
But at that, we do, right? It's awesome.
Ms. Harris, I'd like to address a couple of your comments just real briefly if I may. I think it's important to talk about what this is and what this isn't. What this is, as, as Dr. Trammell says, it's ensuring that kids irrespective of their address of the school they're in and the teacher they have, have an equal access to the curriculum. And so what our educators are doing and they're coming together as they're building units and they're sequencing those units and they're kind of determining, you know, how much time each one will take and making sure that we have adequate coverage of all the mandated knowledge and skills. That's what it is. What it isn't is, this is Tuesday, so we're all on page 72.
Correct.
I, I think that's an important distinction for, for the board to know and for our community to know that, that, that the art and the science of teaching and what, the magic that happens in classrooms with our teachers is still just that. This is making sure though that, that our kids have, wherever they are, have that equal access to that curriculum. So I, I think that is, is an important distinction. And when you ask if there's going to be pushback, I, I would say that for a teacher today, we're asking a whole lot of them in College Station ISD as we're asking them to be the curriculum experts, to determine what is they're going to teach, when they're going to teach it, how they're going to teach it, how long they're going to teach it, how they're going to assess that and get the resources for that. It's putting a lot on the teachers' plates for them to do. What we're having, what we're having these teacher leaders come together to do is do some of that pre-work for, for them so that they have a year to glance, so that they have a, a scope and sequence, so they have those, what we're going to move into model lessons and then district-supported resources that there's folks are going to be able to have. And then next year, we'll be moving into the assessment components that come with that so that we are actually freeing time up from our teachers to be able to do the things that we need to do. And I think, I think when you look at it through that lens, I think you're going to see a lot of widespread support from that, from our teaching staff.
And I appreciate Dr. Ely making that, that distinction because the art and science of teaching, if you took that way, away from teachers, many of them wouldn't enjoy it. They love creating experiences that fit their kids and make their kids happy and the learning, and we want learning to be fun. And as, the minute you come in and say eh, 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 that takes that away. So we don't want to rob that or change that. What we do, curriculum is written for new teachers. What we do want to do is to support and to provide, we call tightly held and loosely held documents. And we've already gone out to every single campus in this district and given presentations on that. So we have already started that training process with educators or with teachers. And so they're aware of, okay, this is what we're going to hold tight, but guess what? All of this is you. You can create those fabulous lessons and experiences that you always have. But if you're a new teacher, we are going to provide a few model lessons for guidance because just because my child has a new teacher doesn't mean that they don't deserve the expertise that a veteran teacher would have or the content that a veteran teacher would deliver. So this kind of equalizes that a little bit. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Trammell for your leadership and, and all that you presented tonight, especially with our curriculum writing process that's going on. I do want to echo Jennifer Smith, Erin Hogan, Amanda Gibson, and Kelly Kovacs for their work, leading and, and moving them between groups. And it's, it's a lot, it is a lot of fun. I mean, we tell you that the folks are excited, but they really are. And I've been in there the last two days and just seeing them getting together and clustering the teaks together and having those good discussions. And then high school group going and talking to the middle school group and then the intermediate school group talking to the elementary group and seeing that vertical articulation has been great to watch. I know we've got three more days and then the real work continues, putting that all together, getting in our educators' hands as soon as possible. So thank you, Penny.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to item I, one. Consider, consider approval of new administrator contracts as recommended by the superintendent of school, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have, excuse me, I have three recommendations to you tonight for new administrators and new administrative positions. Since we've all heard that Mr. McIntyre is leaving and he has not rescinded his, his retirement and we've all said nice things about him, we, we still have his position to fill. And so my recommendation to you this evening is to, is to hire Molly Perry, who is our current executive director for special services and accountability, as the new chief administrative officer. Molly has been with the district a number of years. She started off in Bryan as ISD as special education teacher. She came to us as a diagnostician. She went to Bryan to be special education director there for a couple of years and was hired back in 2013. She was elevated to the executive director position in 2014 and has been a member of the student cabinet, of the superintendent's cabinet, excuse me. And not only with the work that she's done in special services, but she added in accountability. She'll do a great job leading that division, both problem solving in any areas that come up with human resources and technology and student services and all of those areas. So I'm, I'm pleased to recommend Molly Perry as chief administrative officer. My second recommendation would be to welcome back to the community, Justin Grimes, to be the College View High School principal. Justin is here in attendance. Justin, as you know, is no stranger to us. He's been a part of this school district for a number of years. He started off in Bryan ISD. He was a part of Rutter High School when they opened. He was Mr. Martindale's first outside hire when, and when Mr. Martindale opened College Station High School. So he's been involved in the creation of culture at a couple of great high schools in this community. The last two years, Justin has been the principal at Huntsville High School where he has done a tremendous job there and we are just pleased to be able to bring him back to here, to College Station ISD and be the principal at College View. Justin and his wife, Brianna, have two daughters who are in our district and, and just, I'm happy to, to recommend Justin as principal of College View High School. Finally, we have with us tonight, Mindy Chapa. Mindy, will you please wave to the ground there? Thank you, Mindy. Mindy is coming to us from Bryan ISD. She, the last four years, she has been assistant principal at Kemp Carver Elementary School there. Prior to that, she spent nine years in Anderson Shiro ISD. And she is a wealth of experience and leadership, experience being a campus administrator for four years at the elementary level. And we are pleased to have her in College Station ISD. And I will be my third recommendation this evening for new administrators in CSISD. So with that, I would love to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
I move for the approval of new, am I good to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to move for the approval of the new administrator contracts as recommended.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any, let's try to say further discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries six zero. So welcome, congratulations and welcome back. Okay, that takes us to J, one. Consider approval of purchase of laptop computers for Oakwood Intermediate School from Avanext in the amount of $125,820 per National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract using Title I federal funds. Dr. Ely.
Mr. President, members of the board, what we have before you is the purchase of a number of computers for Oakwood Intermediate School. These computers will be used in Oakwood's ongoing work with literacy and be allow, allow them to be able to use junior grade books and have some laptop carts available to their teams. So it would be our recommendation that you would approve this. With any more information on this particular item is Mike Martindale, deputy superintendent and chief financial officer. Mr. Martindale, do you have any further items, information on this item?
I couldn't have said it better myself, Dr. Ely.
Okay. I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter. So any comments, questions?
I would move we approve the agenda item as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries five zero with one abstention. Item J, two. Consider approval of purchase of desktop computers for district-wide refresh from Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This may sound a little redundant or familiar to you that we did have a very similar item last month. And the difference between last month's and this month's is the funding source. Last month, we used 2013 bond funds for about half of the computers that we're doing our district-wide refresh. And so what we're bringing to you today is the second half of that purchase and that's using 2015 bond funds. So it would be our recommendation that the board approve this item so that we can replace our older computers with newer computers throughout the district.
Anything else, Mr. Martindale?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to, again, abstain from discussion and voting on this matter. So are there any comments, questions?
Move approval as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, 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 I will. Okay. Next, we're going to L, one. And that is an executive session, as is L, two. So I will read both items. The board will meet in executive session to discuss school safety. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberations regarding security devices or security audits. Close meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. We will also be meeting in executive session and closed session for item L, two, which states the board will meet in executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters, close meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. And then we will return to open session for any action. We don't anticipate any action. So you're welcome to stay, but we don't anticipate any. Okay, so we're adjourned.